Good morning. And welcome to the January 10th Business Meeting, and we're going to start with a roll call.
Yes, so Happy New Year, Commissioners. This is our first regular business meeting of 2019. We have Mr. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, here this morning, and Mary Rathke, serving as your clerk to the Board. I'll start the roll with Commissioner Humberson. Here. Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Mary, you have another one?
We have a presentation first.
Okay. Well, let's see. First off, we need to select, or publicly, select Board of County Commissioners, Vice Chair for 2019, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that Commissioner Fisher be our Vice Chair for this coming year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Commissioner Sonia Fisher as Vice Chair for Clackamas County Commission in 2019. I want to keep this short, so we shouldn't get in too deep of discussion. Is there any discussion?
So, Mr. Madcor, do I need to abstain because I might have a conflict here, or can I vote on this?
No conflict.
That was kind of a joke.
You do get to vote for yourself.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries. I also wanted to announce that Commissioner Schrader is out of the office. She is now the president.
Yes.
Right? Of Association of Oregon Counties, and will have, right now she's meeting with other presidents of the associations of other counties.
States.
And...
Other states.
Other states. Thank you. So, she's, she's, will be back in the office on Friday, even though we're not open. You said we have a presentation?
Well, that was it.
Oh, okay.
Just the selection of the Vice Chair.
All right. We'll start with citizen communication. I was trying to give Mr. Mannix a little more time, so I'm going to move him to the end of the line. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay. So Shirley and Jane Turville? Thank you for coming. Just give us your name and where you live.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Shirley Morgan with the Citizens for Public Safety, Quality of Life, and Property Values. I bring this to you today because I know some of the Commissioners aren't going to be here next week for the ZDO 271 Marijuana Ordinance Hearing. So I just wanted to bring a few points forward. Allowing for more than one marijuana license per site has had a great impact, as we know. One 56 building site on 40 acres already has code violations. Another 60 buildings on 20 acres has been burglarized. 60 by 100-foot cement slabs are being poured for industrialized leased steel buildings. Each building has an estimated five employees, which means 300 employees and service vehicles will go in and out of that area on a daily basis. The odor is devastating, as some have hemp grows, causing alarming public health issues, which you've heard about. Growers import dirt and then dump their spent dirt along the property lines. Recently approved on South Spangler Road is an 89-building industrial project that includes marijuana processing and production in over 74 leased greenhouses on 26 acres. Another on South Vaughn on 19 acres is proposing industrialized tenant spaces that include indoor production in seven existing buildings, six new structures, four 45 by 360, 148 by 100, 160 by 132, 560 by 100, 100 by 120, 33 100 by 120-foot greenhouses, 10 8 by 40 shipping containers, and a 340 by 460-foot outdoor production area. In addition, multiple licenses in multiple buildings up to 5,000 square feet of indoor grows are also allowed in our RRFV5s, our FF10s, and our two-acre and up zones, which means that seven to eight medical or OLCC micro-tier 1, 625 square feet grower licenses can be issued at one site address. The Mount Hood Equestrian Center located in an RRFV5 zone lease space to seven marijuana growers in more than one building, turning it into an industrialized nightmare. We support the recommendation of one license per tract, and we appreciate and thank you for bringing this ordinance forward, whether it's recreation or medical in the Ag Forest DFU and Timber Zones, but I ask that you consider expanding this code amendment to include the RRFV5, FF10s, and other rural residential two-acre and up zones, because they are targeting those as well, and they're taking the 5,000 square feet and breaking that up into a number of buildings and a number of spaces. And that is a smaller version of the impacts of those areas as well. That's all I have today. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Oh, perfect time.
That's about as perfect as I've ever seen here.
Oh, come on.
Commissioner Fisher.
So, I know you had to go really fast because you had three minutes.
Yes, and that's why I speak fast. I mean, this is my three-minute thing.
Great. But I would really like to, I couldn't track your numbers. They all went together for me while I was listening. Could you, you have it there? Great. So I would just like to have a copy of your testimony.
We'll do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just two things went through my mind, Shirley, is, just curious as to, maybe the math, I can do it myself, but how many square feet total that may be?
They didn't even have it calculated on, on the county website, but I'm guessing it's 500,000 or 600,000 square feet.
Yeah.
And this is a 19-acre parcel that already has, it was a former chicken-growing farm, so there's already two humongous, actually seven buildings on the property. Every inch, every inch of that property will be built on.
Yeah. And the other thing that was going through my mind was, in the last two or three weeks of our recess, reflecting on thoughts about how the next four years will go on my term, and why I'm here, and, you know, what, where my passion is, and, you know, and part of that was expressed Monday night in my comments during my speech, and that, and, but as you were speaking, with all that in mind, I was just thinking, and I thought about Tom McCall a lot in the last two or three, two or three weeks, right? And had Tom McCall had envisioned that we would be here, you know, we want to prevent urban sprawl. Our population growth is something that maybe Tom McCall did not factor into mind, but, you know, when we, when we display or show pictures of what Oregon's all about, you know, it's these sprawling farmlands, right? These beautiful farmlands with crops and growth and our trees and our mountains and all those assets. But I don't think that the structure and the commercialization and industrialization is something that any of us would envision would go on those pastures and that beautiful farmland. But that's what was going through my mind, just thought I'd share that out loud.
Well, it's nice you bring that up, because my grandparents worked for Tom McCall in Prineville, where I grew up, so I was very familiar with what Tom believed in, and you're absolutely correct, Commissioner.
We worked on his old car, by the way.
You did.
Yes. You know, for me, it's, one thing that's kind of interesting is that we haven't heard much of, is that, these are land speculators. They're buying up land with the plan of building large facilities, and, and we're getting pushed back because they may damage their vision or goals for that site. But, and, and I am actually a little disappointed that we couldn't go further than we already, than we're contemplating. I was hoping, no matter how many acres, it was one license. But then we're also told that that's just the mature plant. You can have 10 of other buildings of seedlings, processing, and all that other thing that goes on. So, I mean, I, I'd like to go much further, but it seems that we could be limited in doing that. The other thing is, is that some are in the process of the application with the county, and what do we do? I mean, are, we're going to talk about grandfathering those, never let this happen again, which is kind of a thought. But, I mean, you gave some great examples of frightening things that are going on, and hemp, then, is the worst, is going to be worse. And we have zero control on hemp. So, we got some challenges ahead. I, I hope the legislature steps up and makes this a statewide issue and resolves these problems that are, are increasingly more challenging for the counties.
Well, Chair Bernard, I would just like to add something that you said about the pro-marijuana advocates talking about the millions they've invested. On the other hand, they ignore that citizens living next to those facilities have invested their life savings in their property, so I don't buy that argument anymore.
I don't either, actually.
And your comment about the grandfathering in, there is a stipulation, which you'll hear next week, I'm sure from the Planning Department, that the non-conforming use, then, they would have to apply for non-conforming use and prove that they are existently growing on those facilities. So for the new ones, who aren't even up and running yet, but they've been applied and approved, will have a difficult time proving that.
Yeah. Also, that if they sell it, the conditional use goes away, is my understanding. We need some clarification on that, so that limits, I mean, if you put 10 million into this facility, and it's a conditional use, and then you sell the land to a non-marijuana, I mean, to a marijuana grower, can they keep that, or do they have to reapply it? I'm not really sure.
The only thing that transfers is the non-conforming use. If they were to do the non-conforming use as a grandfathered site, then they can sell that to the new owner. It stays with the land for a period of five years.
Okay, so, yeah, that...
Conditional use, no, but non-conforming, yes.
As long as the next owner grows marijuana within the first five years. Yeah, I had the same situation in a building I used on. Ken.
Thank you. Representatives of the industry were in the office today, not pleased.
I'm glad I'm here today, then.
I'm glad you are, too.
It calls equal time.
Not pleased with the, with the recommendation of staff, quite frankly, and they also weren't very pleased with the conversation I had with them, which was rather direct about many of the irresponsible growers in this, in this whole industry.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I, so I wanted you to know that that conversation occurred, and it was pretty direct. The other thing I just want to point out is, I don't care whether you're speculating in stocks, I don't care if you're speculating in real estate or land, just to hope that the value goes up when a zoning change takes place, or you're speculating on licenses for marijuana. It's called speculation for a reason. It means that the rules may change, and you may not win on that particular one, or the stock value may go down. That is the nature of the beast of speculation. I don't feel sorry for people who speculate and lose, and I'm really happy for people who speculate and win, but that's the name of the beast, so just...
Yeah, one of the examples...
I don't really worry about speculation.
Well, thank you for that input back to them.
One of the examples was the building of an extraction facility before, you know, before it was allowed, and then being upset that we may change the rules. Well, you know, people who do this have a responsibility to actually look and see what the discussion is before they go investing money in something, so I don't really have a lot of sympathy for them either. I think this has gone so far out of control that, you know, it's, and they're, right now, the price of marijuana is so low that I heard 40% of the original people are now out of the business, and...
That's what was predicted.
Yeah, the supply is huge, and we know that it's leaving the state, so, anyway.
Appreciate your support on this ordinance, Chair Bernard.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you. My name is Jane Turville, and I am a citizen here today to talk about the development that is going on on 11650 Southeast Caps Road. It is a permit that has been granted by a staff decision, and I'm going to use my time to talk with you, because I know my neighbor John Niemeyer has talked with you extensively about this, and, and I appreciate the time that you have given John, and I know he does, too. So I, my, I did prepare a packet for you that I believe you all have, and so I just want to, I want to use my time to talk about two requests, one in particular. My first request is that as the county commissioners, that you consider putting a hold on this permit, because the permit has been dealt with as a staff decision, and it, this moves to my second request, and actually something that I'm more concerned about than this actual particular development. And that is, what I was told during our hearing on December 27th was that there wasn't a lot of input I could have, because this was a staff decision. And over and over again during the hearing, we were, John and I were told, when we talked about the issues and the concerns we have, and mine are mostly environmental concerns, not necessarily what the building looks like, but its impact on the environment, and whether the environmental community has been heard on this. And was consistently told, you know, Jane, this is a staff decision. It doesn't matter. This is a staff decision, and we really don't need your input. And this, I'm, this isn't against the staff, the staff is just doing their job. So my second request is that we begin the process of changing the codes, changing whatever we need to do to make it so that development that goes on directly on the Clackamas River, or directly adjacent to the Clackamas River, never ever be a staff decision, that it have public input. The Clackamas River is part of our heritage. We're named after the Clackamas, our county's named after the Clackamas River. And so I would like to, I'd love to be part of the process of making that happen. I'd like to work with you, the Planning Department, whoever I, whoever I need to work with, to make it so that when a development is going to go on, on the river, that it does have transparency, that it does have public input, especially from the environmental community. Because as we found in the hearing, the environmental assessment was not, was done by staff, and it was not, it did not include the Clackamas River Basin Council, which the decision actually flies in the face of what the council has been working on for several years. And so, and I, looks like I'm just about out of time, so thank you.
Geez, you're, the timing today's incredible. Ken?
I'm best.
Mr. Madcor.
Mr. Sir.
I, that's kind of a differential kind of code application, so I'd, I'd be interested to know what the legal ramifications or legal possibilities are on something like that, not necessarily at this moment, but...
On further regulating development upon the Clackamas River, on the banks of the Clackamas River?
Yeah.
Oh, certainly, the county's well within its authority to regulate within the floodplain area on wild and scenic areas, on other natural historic areas, absolutely. It would take a modification to the five-to-10-year planning schedule that the Planning Department has, and it would probably be a pretty sizable undertaking, because the river is, I don't know how many miles long, but it goes from the flanks about Hood to the Willamette. You'd have industrial, residential interest involved.
All along the river.
Mm-hmm. But absolutely, it's well within the county's authority.
It's not legally prohibited or something like that?
No, sir.
But then there's, then there's the question, is it really a viable option? That would be another question that we would have to discuss amongst ourselves, but, okay, thank you, that's what I needed, certainly.
The other question is, how many sites along the river would have the capability of doing what's happening on that site? My guess is it's very few. Dan, would you like to address any of these concerns?
They just create more work for you? Oh, no, it's awesome. I'm Dan Johnson, I'm the Director of the Department of Transportation and Development, and I think, and first and foremost, I'm going to acknowledge some of the concerns there are around change in the environment, and in your environment, because you live there. But secondly, I want to highlight the fact that, and this is about your work, the Board's work, we purchased that property some time ago. That, we purchased that property with the desire to look for investment on that site. It was owned by the Development Agency. I want to highlight the fact, and some folks don't know this, conscious decisions were made by all of you. You do a lot of stuff. You may not remember all this, but I want to remind you of all the stuff that you did. One of the things that we've done is we've worked through Department of Environmental Quality, we've removed all the contamination on the site and received an NFA from them, because we had prior occupants, it was a gravel pit, Clackamas Compost was there, worked to clean the site up there. We've also worked with Division of State Lands and the Corps of Engineers to identify wetlands that were on the site, and we worked with them to actively develop a more localized mitigation plan. We chose consciously not to buy mitigation bank credits, we chose to invest those mitigations back into a local environment. We showed, we worked with Water Environment Services to build that mitigation plan as a part of the Carley Creek Project. If you, you've all been out there, it's an amazing regional detention facility. They've worked with the Development Agency to do that mitigation site, and they are being stewards of that site. We have, and last but not least, you made the conscious decision to keep all the riverfront property. So the site that you see is a part, is a, there's a buffer between that property and the river, there's pro, real property in there, that we made the, that you made the decision to keep. It's still on the Development Agency's ownership, but we're talking about how we convey that property to other better stewards, or good stewards of those sites as well. We do have, we do have the ability to increase our notification standards of the Board, which is to do that. We can have a discussion after we get in here to talk about how we engage in that dialogue, and have to go in our work program. There's a lot of requests out there from the community. We also have, but I want to make sure that you understand, we do have what they call HUCAS standards, setbacks from the rivers. We have Principal River Conservation Area setbacks, Title III setbacks. There are a variety of things that limit where and what you can put in proximity of certain water, any waterway within Clackamas County, in all honesty. And that's just, that's all I got.
I just, right to you, I just want to say that the, I disagree that it wasn't transparent. We have public hearings, we've been talking about this forever, and we, at those public hearings, we did have public input, but did you want to add something?
I do want to add something, and I, and I want to talk to you about kind of the interaction you have with staff. Our staff does a great job, they, they, we run 300,000 development-related interactions a year. We had a roll at approval percentage over 90%, which is amazing for a regulatory agency. I'm not sure the interaction you had about when they said they didn't need your feedback, and I'd love to talk to you about that, and see kind of where that discussion occurred.
Yes, I'm happy to share the emails and such with you, and then, of course, the hearing.
I would love to see those.
Yeah.
Because we, there are processes in place in regards to notice criteria, and that's kind of what you're getting down to, is expanding the notice criteria that we can talk about. We have them in place right now. It's a little challenging based on, on the site you're talking about, because they're 1,000 feet away, that, they're about 1,000 feet away from where the building's at. And our notification in the urban area is about 300 feet proximally, so...
And, and I think that that is something that I've been very upset about with this situation, is, and again, your staff have been very kind, and they've been very generous with their time. So I don't, I'm, this is not a comment on staff at all, but what I see is that the decision to, to do the design review in the way that it was done was treated this site as if it is any industrial site over in that area. And that, and for most of those sites where there's industrial building all the way around it, I think that's fine, that should, there's no reason to have a lot of public input on that. When it comes to the river, I, I have lived there 20 years. I didn't know about this project until my neighbor called and said, "Did you receive anything?" And it just seems to me that if there's public, if all of this stuff has been going on, why were we never notified? And John actually is in that 300 feet.
John's in the 300 feet, because he actually owns an island in the center of the river.
That, that is...
That is what makes John within the 300 feet.
That's what puts him in the 300 feet.
Correct.
He did, he didn't know about, so you've talked about these public hearings and about this, it hasn't, for the people who live there, it has not been transparent. Let me put it that way.
Okay. And we can talk, I'd be glad to talk to you after this.
Paul needs to leave a little early today, not for a while, but let's...
Yeah, I just, I do want a couple of things. I didn't know Dan would be up here when I initially turned my light on to be recognized, but I just want to build on a number of things that Dan said. We have taken a lot of things to make sure that the protection of the river, as far as development, would, so I want to just validate a number of things that Dan has said, what the intention of the Board was. Number one, anything along the river, that slopes and everything, should any accident happen, that nothing finds its way into the river, that it's done as responsibly as possible. I did meet with John over the holidays, and, so I don't know which house you have or home we have, property nearby, but I can empathize with yourself and John, and I did talk to staff afterwards, and what kind of mitigation we could do to look, basically deal with the aesthetics of how that, how that is done. But one clarification I did want to make, which is why I turned my light on in the first place, and that is that, let's just say staff didn't like this project, and they just took it upon themselves to say, "No, we're not going to approve it."
Right, and I don't want them to do something like that.
Yeah, but had they, I mean, just hypothetically, had they done that, and that the applicant would probably have a perfect right to take us to court, and would prevail in court, because we didn't follow our own rules, and our, so, that, that in and of itself is what, is not, is why they probably rendered the decision that they rendered.
Right.
Yeah, and so it's not as though they acted independently, I just wanted to just make sure that was characterized, you know?
Yes, and I, and again, that's the thing, is that the staff has followed the rules. And we had the hearing, and Mr. Fred Wilson, who was the hearings officer, made it very clear at the beginning, he said, "I can't, the only thing I can do is look and see if the staff followed the rules." And I agree with, that the staff did follow the rules. It's the rules, it's not the staff.
Right.
And that's the point I want to make, and that's what I would like to look at changing. I would like to look at changing so that when there is a staff decision, that there is, and if there have been all these hearings, and if there is all this history, please let us know. Please, let's put something in place, so that, I mean, the Clackamas River Basin Council did not know about this. And they're a pretty big group, so...
All right, let's, I just want, yeah, one other comment, and that, and that is, really quickly, the here, as I understand it, the hearings officer, Mr. Wilson, left the record open for three weeks, dating back to December 27th or 8th, so there's still time to input, make comments that he can receive and review.
Actually, we had a week after December 27th in order to give more testimony, and that's, I came down, yes, our, last week, and I didn't know you guys were still on holiday, and so, so our, our time actually to give testimony, as I understand it, ended last Friday, and then we, and then there's a week for the applicant to do rebuttal.
Oh, is that what it is, Dan?
Yeah, there's a switch in that, but it's open for three weeks in totality, but there's, there's, there's windows within that where folks submit things.
I stand corrected.
Yes.
All right, Ken.
Yeah, this is rather a fortuitous conversation, since two days ago I was with planning staff in my office, and one of the issues that I had was the notification issue, initially in the EFU area, which are larger lots, you know, you're talking 50, 120 acres, those kinds of things. So a 300-foot notification might not notify anybody, right? So I asked staff to take a look at the feasibility of expanding that to a quarter-mile or a half-mile or something of that nature, no, no commitment, but just give me some idea of what that would mean in terms of cost to the county, and, and then I can look at it and see, do I want to... give me some idea of what that would mean in terms of cost to the county, and, and then I can look at it and see, do I want to pursue this? So we are actually kind of taking a look at that, and the idea might be incorporated that if there are organizations such as the Clackamas River Basin Council involved in something like they are with the river, that they would automatically be notified. No decisions made, just something I'm exploring.
You don't need to respond.
Pardon?
You don't need to respond, the other thing is view shed, might be, you know, like for that one, it makes sense that if you're just across the river, the view shed might be another issue, but.
So we're looking at some alternatives, you want me to go out there and look from the property? Who do I see?
All I'd like to say is that this particular project brought up this larger concern for me, and as a citizen, I want to do something about it. But as a citizen, I, I'm very much opposed to someone coming in and complaining and not being willing to be part of the solution. And so I would like to work with you, figure this out, have input, I'll do what I can. But I would, I would definitely in the next few years, let's try to change this so that it is, so that at least people feel that they've been heard. Because to find this out with my neighbor calling me saying, do you know a 40-foot building's going up, across the river from you? And, you know, I'm really pleased that you guys are using resources well and that there'll be money coming from this. But I, we have to think about how it impacts the river, and that's my concern.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Les Poole and Brainard Bauer.
Fortuitous. Good morning.
Today's the 10th, by the way.
Les Poole, I live in Clackamas County. By the way, I see some familiar faces here. Their names weren't necessarily mentioned the other night when names were mentioned in the swearing-in ceremony, but I see some familiar faces here from the public side of it, and one of the folks that I see here is Kevin Mannix, who is going to be given extra time beyond his three minutes. So far, we've been here about a half an hour, and that's really good, that's really good, and I hope those watching, and I hope that as we move into next year, and we think about what we just heard from that lady, because she sounded like Les Poole. I hope that, that we continue this format, and I realize you've got a lot of business to do, we can't spend 15 minutes with each person that comes here. But this is real citizen participation, this is real communication, and this is something that you don't see very many places. And I think if you were to look back, you'd probably find your, the, the more open and truly involved and in front of the public you are, the less trouble you got down the road, and when trouble comes, you're in a position where you're not caught off guard. So I, I came today at the first of the year to reiterate a message, and here we are seeing it, and that is, we've got a really good format here, we've got some very, very big challenges. I've got about a minute left, so I won't get into the transportation issues, except to thank Commissioner Savis for his comments in the swearing-in ceremony about the shortcomings of Metro's 2040 Plan, and the need to focus more on that Sunrise Corridor. And for folks that don't know it, that's an issue I think everybody agrees on, Happy Valley and Damascus are just growing like mad. Highway 212 is becoming more unsafe every day, and unfortunately, it's, it's creating rarely discussed impacts to our distribution-based economy. We built that first phase of that highway to keep Fred Myers, to keep those grocers in Clackamas County. I can't imagine how much property tax revenue we get from those folks, but it would probably be an astronomical number. So we need to think about our jobs, we need to think about our transportation beyond a preoccupation with transit. And Paul's right, we can't be Portland, we can't be Portland, we can't be Portland, you're going to hear that over and over from folks. So I hope as we move forward, we get more input on transportation, and certainly I'll be talking next week about the tolling measure and our effort to gather signatures, we have a very reasonable ballot title. And I'll, I'll also be discussing and bringing up some issues and concerns about the proposed vehicle registration fee. So I appreciate the time as always, I'm overwhelmed, so I'm sorry I couldn't nail it, thank you.
So I, I just want to say this format, when we have time, won't, won't be changing, I like it. Well, I think we like it, and you like it, so I mean, I don't anticipate a change. The, the other thing is that, I can't remember what the other thing, if I think of it, I'll let you know before you leave. Anyway, Mr. Brainard.
Yes, good morning, I'm Brainard Brower, from, from the area of Clackamas County, and from Redland, and just want to say Happy New Year. There's kind of an underlying theme here, I'm kind of hearing, you know, I definitely have always thanked also this forum, the ability to have this direct input, fill out a card, come in and say something. I would like to encourage, since I have, one of my issues is that staff, where you're not the bureaucrats, they are, is far less willing, because they believe, at least I'm dealing with traffic engineering, they are definitely more of the standpoint, even stated, that they decide. And I, our underlying issue in Redland is the dictation to us, we need to lead the way, we need to be part of that process. I gave you a, I tend to be a little wordy, so I have one, one page that I handed to you, I really came for one reason today. And that is trying to find a way to make radar feedback signs on both entrances on the downhill area, east and west into Redland, on Redland Road, a permanent feature. The issue has been brought up over cost, and so as a policy matter, I'm asking you, as the commission, to help find a way that if cost is the issue, we're talking $3,500, $5,000 each, let the community do a fundraising to purchase those signs. Not asking you to have you let us put them up, traffic engineer has the expertise to make sure it is within the guidelines of the state, but allow us if necessary to purchase them and make, take that cost issue off the topic, so it can be implemented on a permanent basis. We presently have a temporary one, don't know how long it's going to be there, but it's temporary. And finally, you know, I have certainly taken Mr. Humbertson's comments to heart about the three-way stop and the idea of stopping Redland Road at Fisher's Mill, and there's a growing number of people in the community talking about this. The next CPO meeting, I think, is February 6th, I hope I'm stating that right, at the Grange Hall. I'm not sure of the time, after 6 o'clock, I'm going to say 6:30 or 7, but please check that in, if anybody wants to come, please come. But there's a growing number of people talking about this topic. So far, I think we're jumping ahead, and I think the growing consensus is we're jumping ahead without implementing the radar feedback signs, focusing on reducing the 35 permanent rather than just to the school zone, and finally, working with private landowners on both Fisher's Mill Road and Henrisie to do realign, realignment and site distance issues. There's significant work we can do there in cooperation with private landowners, and there is willingness to cooperate, not just myself, but Henrisie as well, to actually make real meaningful improvements. And as far as I can tell, the accident rate has dramatically been improved in the last year since we've reduced to 40. We've done other private measures of signs that we've purchased and things that are temporary, so we need to do more, but we've made a dramatic improvement, and I thank you for your help.
How did he do that? I don't know.
You had the first buzzer, and you said, I thank you for your help, and then the second buzzer. Yeah, I read your material the other day, and I appreciate your input. Frankly, I'd like us to explore the idea, if, if folks are willing to purchase the signs to, to help their own community, I can't see a reason why we couldn't make that work. I'd like us to at least explore that alternative and, and assuming there's no legal reasons we can't do it, I don't see a problem with that. If that helps slow people down there, as, as if you will, an interim solution and see if that works, I'm okay with that personally.
I'd support exploring that myself.
I, I think it's a petty amount of money, I don't think that's the issue, I want to find out what the actual issue is, so I think we should ask. Because I don't know, I know we've been talking around this thing for quite a while, but what is the actual issue? I mean, if Canby can afford a so, a radar sign as you go over Knights Bridge, Clackamas County could certainly afford to do that too. But my understanding is that the stop is visibility, that's my understanding, but let's ask that we address this.
The speed limit issue is a state issue, that's, that's been the problem there, and the state's basically, they dropped it, I think it was five miles an hour, if I remember correctly.
Five miles an hour, technically a school zone to 35, which is kind of hard to say how many people even know that that exists, let alone enforced.
That part of, we don't have a lot to say.
But the state sets the guideline, but we can appeal it, and again, that's one of my other issues is the appeal process. You know, this, our traffic engineer, there's some ego involved, but there's also some friendship with the state traffic engineer from, from ODOT. And so it's our traffic engineer that has to request to go to in front of an independent board from the state and have themselves have oversight. It's a hard position to put our traffic engineer into.
I, I just want to make sure that this is understood though, and with all due respect, sir, the traffic engineer that we have here in Clackamas County is nationally recognized expert in this subject. I'm always hesitant when you have somebody with that level of credentials, credential ability and experience to override their judgment, given the, the liability issues that can come from that sort of thing, so I, I want to work within the rules and systems that we have, and respect that expertise quite candidly, but I still want to work with figuring out how we can solve the problem.
Concentration of power is a corrupting kind of an effect that is hard for anybody to deal with, anybody, and I think it's putting too much on one person in this county, I really do. You know, and asking to go to the state safety board is an oversight, we're not taking on liability, we're allowing independent folks to look the situation over and come up with a, a review of the determination, you know, and if there's a path, so we can also go back to the state after doing radar feedback signs and try again.
Oh, yeah, I'm, like I said earlier, I injected that I am open to exploring the idea about the citizens volleying up or helping contribute to the costs of that. I can tell you that last time I sat down with a room full of our staff and our engineers on the safety issues about a lot of roads in Clackamas County, that there would be a lot of people saying, we would, we want one too, so I would just caution that, number one, there's a cost to that if the citizens didn't contribute, help contribute, so I think that would, that would help. And I also agree with Chair Bernard that we should definitely understand what all the issues are for everyone, so if I can, I just texted my, or emailed my staff to see if I can attend that meeting so I can learn what the issues are myself with all the neighbors. Certainly, you've done a great job of attending these meetings and bringing this to our attention and sending this material, which I have read. And, but we need to do learn all of it, and again, if there's a means in which the, the community can participate in that and help finance some of that, that cost, small that it may be, but still, for some families couldn't afford it, but those who can, that's great, we can make that happen, let's do it.
It's a good point, donating, contributing money towards this would, you know, if every neighbor wanted to contribute money, that, that'd be great. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you for your interest.
Dale Phillips and Kevin Mannix. Dale, you're up first, tell us your name and approximately where you live.
Dale Phillips, I live out in Redland off of Ridge Road. Here following up with Brainard with the three-way stop, but here the openness and you guys wanting to get involved. One statement is, is you're, you know, the, I think the area and the people out there are very willing to contribute, to try to make this, but don't forget they've already contributed. The CPO meeting is February 6th at 7:15 at the Redland Grange Hall. I didn't know it got moved away.
Hey, got it.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
It's already calendared.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to go over some of the, the, we have a Redland community Facebook page, there's been a lot of people weighing in on, you know, the stop, the three-way stop not being what they want at all, talk about, you know, the roundabouts and all these other things that are just too cost prohibitive. Brainard going back to the basics, saying, why don't we build up to these other measures, let's start inexpensive, and and I think that's the consensus that, you know, he's bringing forward from the community is, you know, the, the radar signs have been a huge decrease coming the, the, coming down into Redland and coming from the cafe, the cafe side. The citizens have basically just started doing, you know, 35, the ones that are in the know and slowing it down, so if we can get some help from traffic to, you know, remind people of that 35 or 40 with those signs, it's going to be great. So. That's what I have, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, welcome.
Good morning, I'm Kevin Mannix from Salem, I'm an attorney in my usual job, but I'm not here in that capacity. I've been, I've had my own law firm for 33 years, and usually I spend a lot of my time doing business law and representing nonprofits. But in the last year, I've been spending a great deal of my time dealing with transportation issues. I am the Director of the Oregon Shipping Group, which is a statewide organization which advocates to enhance the capability of moving freight, especially by rail. And in that capacity, I became involved in the Transportation Act, and our organization strongly supported the enactment of the 2017 transportation legislation. We also advocated for, within that, the establishment of an intermodal facility in the Mid Willamette Valley. And we convinced the legislature to appropriate $25 million of lottery money as a startup grant to get such a facility going. An intermodal facility is a facility where trucks bring their freight, usually in containers, and that container is placed on rail to go to its destination. Alternatively, the freight is brought in, in containers by rail, and then placed in the trucks for a short haul run to the destination. There is no intermodal facility south of Portland, there are two truck rail transportation facilities in Portland, one called Northwest Container Services, and another at the Port of Portland, which is called T6. You have a lot of trucks going to those facilities. More significantly, since the Port of Portland is no longer really engaged in the business of container shipping, you have folks driving through Portland to Seattle and Tacoma to get to those seaports. I'm focusing here on the export of agricultural products and the import of products to the Northwest. And what's happened in the last couple of years is, besides all the other congestion issues which you face in the Portland metro area and in Clackamas County, we've had the addition to that of people having to revert to trucks all the way through. We are part of a solution, I'm not here to ask you to do anything, but I am here to inform you because we think it's important that the approaches we take be systemic and that we connect up, and then one invitation I'd make to Clackamas County at any time, if you have rail-related issues, issues about transportation, where we can help move freight and get it off the highways, we'd love to help. Now, I am working on, I am working with, a project in Brooks for a Brooks intermodal facility, we're one of the last two finalists. There's a facility for Millersburg that's been proposed and a facility for Brooks. In Brooks, it's called the Oregon Port of Lammet, and the intention is to have a facility there where trucks heading north will go into that facility and they will deliver their freight, and you have a rail yard there, and you will move that freight by rail from Brooks, generally at the beginning to Seattle and Tacoma to get on ships to head out to the Pacific. And conversely, any imports coming into Seattle and Tacoma are brought by rail to Brooks to be distributed generally southward or into North Marion County, moving product by rail instead of by truck. The legislature supported the appropriation for this kind of facility on the basis that it reduces carbon emissions, it reduces fossil fuel use, and yes, from the Portland perspective, it reduces congestion. You would have a lot less trucks coming into the Portland area, going through the Portland area, and that does have a real impact on 205. Another feature though is it will help our exporters, our farm. Another feature, though, is it will help our exporters, our farmers in the Willamette Valley. When the container shipping was shut down from the Port of Portland, our farmers are spending five hundred to six hundred dollars more per container to get to Seattle Tacoma to get on ships. And that's a competitive disadvantage, it's also a scheduling issue. And now with the new federal regulations limiting truck driving in terms of interstate driving, where you have a limited number of hours, and you have the electronic logging requirements, and you have turnaround time delays at Seattle Tacoma, it's becoming more and more problematic for a farmer to send a truck up north with a container and have it turned around and get back within the shift of that driver. I just wanted you to know that we're moving forward in this process. There are two finalists, Millersburg and Brooks. I am the representative, in effect, I'm the executive director of the Oregon Port of Lamont, and we are proposing that. We do have a website, Oregon Port of Lamont, where there's full information about our five hundred forty-page application to the state for the grant. We also have put up the five pages of questions we were asked later, and then on November fifteenth, we submitted thirty pages of answers to those questions. So I wanted you to be aware of all of this and let you know that we're trying to be part of a transportation solution for the state as we work on this Brooks project.
Question, is this on EFU land, is that the issue?
Part of the site, no, there is no issue on that because the majority of the activity will involve supporting agriculture. And there is an exception as to EFU property for property which is used in commercial activity in support of agriculture.
Who are you getting pushback from?
Actually, there's no pushback about the merits of the Brooks project. The real pushback is it's an unusual situation, there's competitors, which is better? And I would say right away, I think the Millersburg proposal is good. Our position is the Brooks proposal is better. And part of our advocacy on that has to do with the market that you can reach. There are markets in Clackamas and Washington Counties and North Marion County that will use a Brooks facility, but if you have to go all the way south to Millersburg, they may still opt to go north by truck.
Yeah, we want it in Clackamas County, so we're gonna be fighting you, too. Just kidding.
Well, the good news is the door is shut, there's only two finalists and no one else gets in the room.
Well, my main assignment here at the county is transportation, and so that's a very intriguing proposal, and I, there's a lot of common sense to that. If it pencils out, and I guess that's more of a business model side, but I would love to connect with you and learn more about the business model side and, you know, and I know where Brooks is pretty well. I know a little bit less about how strategically located the Millersburg application is, but I'd love to explore that a little bit. So I'm happy to look at your website, any kind of links you can provide or information, or direct me how I can find that.
And I've turned in an information sheet which you have, and there, you should be able to contact me through that, but the staff also have all my contact information, and I'm spending three-fourths of my time on this right now. I love it, because, so I'm happy to engage.
Sure.
It's also rural communities that would benefit, which we need to, you know, do what we can to help those communities.
And Mr. Chair, in fact, working with the Marion County Commissioners, Brooks is an unincorporated community. So as we've done this, we've also sponsored the creation of the Brooks Community Group, which is fifty-six residents and businesses from the community to make sure we're getting feedback from that community as to what works best in terms of all of the transportation elements when you put in this kind of a facility.
Great, thank you for coming and letting us know about it.
We will keep the world knowing about it, and I thank you very much for your time this morning.
Sure you will.
Thank you. Next, we're, that's it on citizen communication, we're going to consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a renewal grant agreement with the Chair of Oregon for Vaccine Hesitancy Program. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under County Administration, approval of a contract with Managing for Results to provide on-call strategic planning and performance management facilitation and consulting. Under Community Corrections, approval of a grant award with the Oregon Department of Safety Standards and Training for Clackamas County Community Corrections Peer Support Training. Under Public and Government Affairs, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Gladstone regarding payment for services related to Willamette Falls Lock State Commission. Under County Council, execution of a quick claim deed releasing the interest of a temporary slope construction easement, Clackamas Industrial Area. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of Amendment Number One to the Grant Agreement with the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department and the City of Milwaukee for development of Wichita Park. Under the Development Agency, acceptance of a quick claim deed releasing the interest of a temporary slope construction easement, Clackamas Industrial Area. Approval of the Third Amendment to the Disposition Agreement with Oregon Beverage Recycling Cooperative. And execution of property exchange agreement for one-one-six-two-seven Southeast Caps Road, Clackamas Industrial Area. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Okay. Do any commissioners want to remove, pull any item from the consent agenda?
Couple of questions when we're ready.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda presented.
Second, we moved in seconded for further discussion.
Couple of quick questions. On the Gladstone issue under Public and Government Affairs, item number one, I just want to be sure that there'll be periodic reports to the cities that are contributing money to that project.
Certainly so.
So they know what's going on with their money, if you will, as our partners. And then my, the other one, it was just, I noted the Parks Grant for Wichita, and I wanted to note that, given that that's an underserved area, it's nice to see NCPRD being able to invest in that area. So I just want to put that on the record, and that's all I had.
And for me, the managing for results, we've committed a lot of money to this, and there's another couple of years of fairly expensive investment. And I, you know, I think we've seen a lot of value, but I think that a couple of years from now, I think we need to look at, you know, where we're at on that and determine whether we need to move forward. It's a lot of money. Paul.
I just want to just share Commissioner Bernard's concern about that. I'd like to just kind of just get a rough idea of how much money we have invested, staff time plus outside time to see another three hundred and thirty thousand dollar expense on this. I don't want to play on the words here, but I'd really want to see results. And I know that managing for results, I mean, I'm not, you know, a little bit of humor, a little bit of levity, but I, I, you know, I strongly felt that we needed a strategic plan, and this is a means of getting there, a vehicle to get there. But I've also been very vocal about getting some results and getting this done, this project done. And it's gone, I think, on a little bit longer than I would have liked. And that's not, you know, any one particular staff's, you know, particular issue so much as participation from the departments and so on and collectively. But we need to have some, you know, we'll say closure, but I want to see this project, you know, come complete and our involvement in setting the bar and setting some of those milestones and those measurements. And, you know, Tuesday's work session with regard to DTD and the fleet was one example. I think there was revealed in there that some staff were not aware or engaged as much as they should have been. So with that said, I think we need to keep a sharp eye on this and make sure that we, that the end game here, at the expiration of this three hundred and thirty thousand dollar expenditure and the effort, that there's a result certain.
Yeah, it may be helpful to, so this is a three-year contract intended to provide on-call consulting and facilitation services to support what will be an ongoing effort at our managing for results efforts here. And I believe one of the things that you will see coming in the next fiscal year budget is the use of the dashboard data directly into the budget document themselves. It's been a bit of an evolution for the departments. Mr. Chandler and I have actually been meeting with all of the departments to get reports as to where they're at with their respective measurements for results. Some departments are further along than others. For example, the Sheriff's Office has just really completed the work to put together the development of the plan. But as we've been learning all the way along, it takes about a year or so for each department, working with the measurements that they've identified, then to then refine and update and modify them along the way. And we're working with some twenty-one different offices and departments in this effort. So I fully appreciate your interest, and I think it's very appropriate to keep an eye on the development of this effort over time. My, whether or not we have a relationship with this particular consultant or not in the future, the idea is that this would be embedded into our operations well on into the future, well beyond any relationship we would have with this consultant.
Thank you, I'll take off.
Okay, thank you. I, my issue, and I'd love to hear from the people who actually utilize this, is this informing anything? Is there, who's using this and is it of value to them? That's just what I, I know for you it is, I believe. Is it gonna be for the next administrator? I don't know. Is it valuable for the department heads? Is it valuable to the commissioners? So that's the kind of thing I'd just like to figure out.
Very good.
Commissioner.
So I just wanted, as I reviewed this, it's my understanding that we approved these expenditures when we approved the last budget? Because we approved managing for results. And we're only, this is only before us right now because there's a contract, but this has been in the works for quite some time. Yeah, that's correct. So I just wanted to make sure that my assumptions were correct on that, thank you.
And you know, the question, I think Paul's comment, is there ever an end game where you say, "All of a sudden, we got all we need?" There continues to be changes in growth and evaluation and input, but I hope that that cost is reduced over time.
Yeah, as the county gains maturity and the work that it's doing here, the reliance upon outside consulting help ought to be less over time. But the idea is that this will continue into the future. Departments will have embedded into their operations means and mechanisms to be able to measure the effectiveness of the work that they do. And I will say, I met with two departments just this week to get a status report of their efforts, and what I heard from both department directors was the value, the added value that this approach has been giving them and how they work with their individual divisions and staff and team, so.
Yeah. All right, thank you. So we're going to save Commissioner Communications until after the public health.
A point of order, we have to take a vote on the.
Oh, that's true. And Paul left before we voted on it, didn't we?
So there has been a second.
Yeah, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and then motion carries. Should I ask Paul to vote before he left, though? Could have been kind of a challenging, should one or two, a couple of us be the opposite vote. All right, so we're gonna adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Clackamas County Board of Health for the next session. So we're gonna what?
Recess.
Point of order, we're recessing.
Yeah, not adjourned. All right, so with that, what are we doing, what's up, Don?
I'm going to invite the public health team up.
Oh, is it them again?
Just so the audience knows what's going on, we've kind of, you may be able to tell us a little more that, we've kind of reconvened the public health board that may have been less a part of the work we do, put it at a higher level, I guess that's all I can say. It's more a part of the job we do now than it was for a number of years. And that's because of some legislative changes, correct? Anyway.
Well, good morning, thank you for having us here. I'm Julie Albers, the Assistant Director of Public Health in Clackamas County, and you?
And I'm Dr. Sarah President, I'm the Public Health Officer for Clackamas County.
So we are honored to be here at our first Board of Health meeting in Clackamas County and appreciate your attention to the public's health and your time on this topic. So today's agenda will be presenting about the role of public health in the Board of Health and present to you two emerging health issues. In the future, the agenda will mirror your business meeting agenda, so might include some citizen communication or some consent agenda items. We don't have those for you today. I don't think we have citizen communication. And we'll continue to present on emerging health issues. We may ask other, we may be presenting or asking our partners to present on health topics. So the slides are up.
Yeah, I just want to add really quickly that you are correct with some of the changing legislation around public health. It gives us an opportunity to revisit the local public health authority and how to best use the powers you have over the public health for the county. So we are excited to have this opportunity to meet as a, as the Board of Health, as a separate meeting from the business meetings, to ensure that you are updated about all of the public health issues going on in our county and to allow for more focused time for this responsibility. And Julie is gonna go into some more details about that authority and what that means.
Thank you.
After I figure out how to use this thing. Sarah do it. So you have in front of you this health impact pyramid. We'll start by saying that the public health and the Board of Health are responsible for the public health. This is a big responsibility. It aligns with your strategic priority around ensuring safe and healthy and secure communities. So this pyramid gives us some structure or guidance around how we might provide a framework for ensuring the public's health. So the top of the pyramid is a place that has interventions that have the smallest impact, and the bottom of the pyramid, the largest impact. And you're probably already aware, of course, the bottom of the pyramid items are more difficult and require greater force of work compared to those tops. So we tend to gravitate to the things at the top of the pyramid as being readily available and easy to implement. This was first designed around oral health. We've got some examples on the slide that are not really oral health, but I'll give you a couple of examples. So for example, counseling and education intervention might be brush your teeth, floss your teeth. We all know how well that works unless you're a faithful flosser. A clinical intervention might be removing plaque and filling cavities. A long-lasting protective intervention could be dental sealants or topical fluoride, changing the context or making the default choice the easy choice. An example that's there on the slide is fluoridation, a contentious one, of course, in this county. And then socioeconomic intervention, reducing poverty, ensuring our population to have dental insurance and access to services. So this just provides a framework on what may have the largest impact on the public's health as we plan our activities and interventions. Next slide. So a healthy population is a, provides good quality of life, good economic growth, aligns with a strategic priority of growing a vibrant economy. So how is Clackamas County doing? You've heard of the county health rankings, and in two thousand and eighteen, we ranked number three in the state. On the right-hand side of the slide are the factors that impact that county health ranking. Healthcare, we ranked number four. Behavior, health behaviors, we ranked three. Socioeconomic factors, we ranked three. And then in the physical environment, we ranked number thirty-six of thirty-six. And the primary factor there was long commutes and driving alone in vehicles. And then all of those health factors determine health outcomes. Our mortality or years of life, we rank five. And interestingly, the general health status of the community, which is self-reported by community members, we rank a number one. So our citizens of residents of Clackamas County rank themselves as very healthy. The county public health and Board of Health serve as the chief health strategist. What does this mean? Those divisions or those programs listed under public health work together with the other H three S divisions and together with our regional and state partners and other departments within the county to ensure the public's health. within the county to ensure the public's health. So what does public health do to ensure the public's health? So we monitor health status to identify problems. Surveillance is what we call that. We diagnose and investigate health problems and health hazards. We inform and educate and empower people to make decisions about their health. Mobilize partnerships. We can't do this alone. An example of that is our blueprint grantees who receive funding to address health issues in their local communities. We develop policies and plans that support health efforts. Some examples over time that public health has done, and you're all familiar with seatbelt laws, bicycle helmets, the Indoor Clean Air Act. We enforce laws and regulations. Next slide, Sarah. And an example of that is this tobacco retail licensing that you're hearing from us about is an example of enforcement of our regulation. Link to people, people to needed health services, so navigate and assure that health services are available and accessible to our population. We do this in our reproductive health work in our WIC program. Assure a competent public health workforce. We evaluate the effectiveness and accessibility and the quality of our programs. And then we research for new insights, and we're looking currently into how we use data and informatics to both predict health problems as well as ideal interventions to those problems. We've presented to you on modernization in the past, so just a review. Public health modernization was a state bill a few years ago to move us forward in how we approach public health. We've organized our own division around these strategies, where we have the Center for Public Health Advancement to address those foundational capabilities, and we have our four foundational programs: regulatory environmental health, population health strategies, access to care, and infectious disease. We've named them slightly different, but essentially they mirror those programs that are listed there in the graphic. So who has the authority of public health in Oregon? Ultimately, the State Public Health Division, Oregon Health Authority, Boards of Health such as yourself, local public health authorities, and in this county, that's the Public Health Director, Dawn Emmerich, excuse me, she's the local public health administrator, and state local health officers such as Dr. President. So the state's role in this is to supervise the local health authority, responsible ultimately for enforcing law, engaging or enhance, they have enhanced authority during a public health emergency response, and they distribute funds to us, to local public health authorities. And what local public health does is, on the ground, provision of the services. So our infectious disease program is controlling disease, and we have parent and child health services in our access to care program, environmental health services such as restaurant pools, spas, hotel inspections, as well as emerging environmental health issues around air-water quality, collecting and reporting health statistics, and that's part of our surveillance. And then our vital records, we manage the vital records, birth and death certificates for the population. We administer and enforce state and local public health laws. And then other activities outlined in one are called program elements from Oregon Health Authority in our financial services contract with them. So we have the authority to investigate violations of public health law. I'd like to add that little public health law in there. We're not out giving speeding tickets. We issue, we have the authority to issue subpoenas, civil penalties or orders, seek court orders to enforce public health law, require removal of toxic substances, and refer matters for possible prosecution. Fortunately, we have very little experience or need to do any of these activities and work from the prevention aspect before it comes to that. Oregon Health Authority monitors our work through what is called a triennial review. Every three years, they come out and do a comprehensive review of our work and our compliance with their requirements. The results of that review are presented to you and the county health administrator. So our next review is in 2020. Stay tuned. We also participate in the National Public Health Accreditation, which is providing national standards for how public health is implemented. This has really supported our Community Health Needs Assessment, our Community Blueprint for Health, Community Health Improvement Plan. It requires our strategic plan, so we have an internal strategic plan. And our next accreditation we're preparing for, we'll submit this fall for a 2020 re-accreditation. So that's a five-year cycle that we're just completing the first cycle. We were one of the first public health counties in the country to be accredited, so that's exciting news. Any questions about that before we move on to some emerging health issues?
I only had, so the county ranks pretty high.
The county ranks pretty high in the county health rankings, indeed. Do you want to know who's ranks higher? Are you that competitive?
No. My guess is maybe Multnomah County might, no. So yes, I do.
Washington County and Benton County.
Oh.
Yeah.
You know, and we are, if there's one thing I've learned is that we are all very different. Multnomah County is almost strictly health, housing, and human services. We are everywhere. And Washington County's different, too. But that's good. Good job.
Yeah, I want to just add to that, that we are aware that the overall ranking of our county doesn't necessarily reflect the health of all individuals within our county. That's part of why public health, in looking at our data and our health outreach efforts, have split up the county into what we call health equity zones, because we know that different parts of our county have different health needs. And so we are, we're doing what we can to address that as well, knowing that not everybody in our county ranks number three in the state.
Ken.
Thank you. You have the, according to what you said, you have the authority to cite and subpoena for health violations?
Yeah.
Okay. I've had two complaints come to me in the last two months. One had to do with restaurants and dumpsters that were with holes in the lids that made it possible for rats to accumulate, which is a significant public health hazard. It was very difficult to get any assistance in actually getting that problem solved. The other was the collection of trash in a neighborhood that was right next door to other people's homes. Instead of them accessing the trash services, they would collect the trash for months at a time until such time as they felt compelled to take it to a dump. It ended up in the overall destruction of the neighbor's recreational vehicle, which may or may not have been a health issue, but directly, but obviously the rats are a health issue. My question is, how can we address those issues more aggressively when we get a citizen complaint? If you have that authority to actually cite and subpoena, it seems to me that's a perfectly good place to start.
Thank you for that comment, Commissioner Humberton. We have the ability to cite and subpoena around current public health law. And when it comes to restaurants, it's really around the preparation and delivery of food within the restaurant itself.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you. Please speak up.
Most of the law in our food code and the restaurant laws are around the preparation and serving of food within the restaurant. How you manage waste within the kitchen is regulated, and as long as there is a regulation, we have the power to enforce that. I hear your concerns, and I've had a lot of questions around things like this as well. Without a known transmission of a communicable disease, then the accumulation of waste that may attract rats does not fall into any of our current laws that we have the ability to enforce.
What would it take?
So there is some connection with codes and solid waste, and I do work with them. I have a good relationship with them. And if that's something that we want to address through the Board of Health in the future, I think that that would be worth considering.
Do you need a specific code on our part to be able to enforce? Is that what you're telling me?
I believe so, yeah.
I'd like to ask you.
And we would need a program, we would need to build a program to.
Because I don't think there's any question about the ability of rats to spend, to spread disease. I mean, we all know about the bubonic plague, and quite frankly, that disease has been found in the rivers and arroyos of Arizona and Texas because of pollution in the rivers between the two borders. So I really want to be err on the side of caution with that sort of thing.
Yeah, I think that we can talk more about this. Currently, we don't have any programs or ways of regulating rats. I know that our vector control program also is not approved to manage rats. We can, it's a question that's come up, and I'd like to think more about it.
Yeah, I'd like to see if we could, if you need an ordinance to be passed by us, I certainly wanted to see if we can consider that, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
I don't know if you're talking about the same rat situation that I'm aware of, but I do know that we had a situation where there was concern about dumpsters and because they were shared dumpsters by multiple businesses, as I understand it, some of which were restaurants. So one of our environmental health inspectors did go out and inspect that site and ensure that the lid was closing appropriately and that the dumpsters were being appropriately managed, so.
And additionally, I know that we've had reports of rats in schools potentially over time. And whereas the school is not regulated itself, any commercial kitchen or any kitchen can ask for an environmental health inspection. And so our environmental health specialists have gone out to schools to help mitigate issues within the building and look at, you know, external ways that rats could be getting inside. So we do work with businesses on that. It's not necessarily an enforceable law, but we certainly work on education and.
Speaking for myself only at this point, I'm certainly willing to consider an ordinance that would help you do some enforcement if that's what it takes to get it done.
Don.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that point up. Of course, a part of the reason we have invested in showcasing the role that the county plays in public health and reconstituted you as the Board of Health is to actually create a venue for just these kinds of conversations.
I thought that might be the case.
And the fact that this presentation stimulated your interest in that question has proved positive that this is of value to the county and the citizens.
Great.
Okay, let's move on to some presentations, I guess. We have influenza and nicotine use in youth.
Yeah, so I, as the Public Health Officer for Clackamas County, like to take this part of the Board of Health meeting to give you a little update on some emerging issues within public health. So to clarify, I am a deputy tri-county health officer. I am employed by the tri-county health officer program housed in Multnomah County. And there are four of us who provide health officer services to the tri-county region, Multnomah, Washington, and Clackamas. And I am the one who provides health officer services for Clackamas County. Paul Lewis is the tri-county health officer, and I work closely with him, as well as Deputy Health Officer Jennifer Vines and Deputy Health Officer Christina Baumann in Washington County. So it's a really nice program that we have for the health officer services that makes sure that we coordinate across the Portland metro region and around our region of the three counties. The health officer is a physician, a medical doctor, who provides clinical consultation and any clinical aspects of public health work if the public health administrator is not themselves a licensed medical provider. So I look at things like flu. So yesterday, the regional public health group released a press release that influenza season in the metro region started. So I wanted to talk a little bit about just how we look at influenza, because I thought that might be interesting to you, and how we decide when flu season starts, and talk a little bit about flu, because now it is, that's our big thing that we're going to be watching for. And I can go as slowly or as quickly, depending on how interested you are in this. So flu, influenza, often called flu, is a contagious respiratory illness. The symptoms can vary among different people, but oftentimes have body aches, chills, a dry cough, high fever usually, headaches, sore throat, stuffy nose, and fatigue. There are a lot of respiratory viruses, as well as stomach viruses that go around at this point in the season. The flu itself is by the influenza virus, which is typically a very, more significant illness. It's the type of thing that hits you like a truck, and then you're down for two weeks, is kind of the typical presentation for it. The picture over here shows the benefits of flu vaccination. According to the CDC, they estimate that in 2016 to 2017 season, flu vaccine prevented 5.3 million illnesses, 2.6 million medical visits, and 85,000 hospitalizations were prevented by people being vaccinated. If you get the flu virus, you generally feel symptoms one to four days later. You can potentially spread it before you're ill, so that is why we try to prevent it as much as possible, and the best prevention is that vaccine. Our elders are at higher risk for developing complications, including pneumonia, dehydration, and exacerbation of underlying health diseases. This is part of why we're very concerned about our elderly during flu season. There are thousands of flu deaths annually. The CDC reports national deaths are anywhere from 3,000 to 49,000. So it varies from year to year, depending on the flu strain and the severity, as well as the diagnosis and the cause of death that is on the death certificates. Estimate about 200,000 hospitalizations each year, and of those, about 90% of them are in the elderly, so that's age 65 and over. We know that our flu vaccine does not necessarily work as well in people age 65 and older. We do have a specific vaccine that's stronger because the immune system response decreases as you age. So the best protection for our vulnerable elderly people is for everybody around them to get the vaccine.
Why do you keep looking at me with that little smile on your face?
I did not mean to. I did not mean to do that.
I had it in '68, not since.
I'm trying to look at all of you.
Yeah. '68's the last time I had the flu.
Okay.
I refuse.
We could talk more about that. So in the United States, flu season usually occurs in the fall and winter, and the peak is anywhere from late November through March. This year, annual flu season was initially began on December 21st due to elevated national activity that was mostly on the East Coast, and at that point, it wasn't hitting Oregon as strongly. What we look at to make these determinations, so the CDC looks at test results from laboratories, and that looks at the percent of tests that are actually positive. It looks at the specific viruses and looks at antiviral resistance patterns. We have an influenza-like illness reports from the outpatient influenza-like illness surveillance network. There are hospital surveillance networks, and Oregon is one of the states that is involved in the emerging infections program, and so they get data from our hospitalizations here and influenza hospitalization surveillance project states also. So they look at all of these to determine the rates of flu that is happening. They also look at mortality data, and they look at vaccination rates across the country. In Oregon, we provide some of this information to the CDC for them to understand the flu season. We also, our state Oregon Health Authority has their own surveillance programs. So they put out a weekly report of influenza data that you can all access online. It's called Flu Bites. The graphs you see here are about two weeks old, because I had to submit these materials then. But they look at the Oregon Essence Syndromic Surveillance, so that's looking at reasons that people show up in emergency rooms and urgent cares. We look at labs. This is too boring. I find this stuff really interesting. We look at hospitalization rates and outpatient surveillance. And we also look at influenza outbreaks. So flu itself is not reportable. We do not have funding to follow flu. We do not follow every case of flu that is reported, but we are required to investigate and help control outbreaks of influenza, and those are particularly amongst long-term care facilities. Again, that elderly community that is most vulnerable. So we look, we work a lot with those facilities to help prevent and control influenza outbreaks. But outbreaks also happen in schools and other places that are reported to us. I wanted to just highlight what we do on a local level. So starting when flu season starts to appear to be happening or coming soon, the health officer program convenes a weekly phone call amongst public health representatives, as well as hospital representatives from all the hospital systems in the metro region. And we look at issues that each hospital is facing, try to coordinate a date that is the regional flu season kickoff, I suppose, which was yesterday, and try to ensure that when hospitals are implementing their control measures, such as masking, such as visitor restrictions, that those are at least coordinated in time, although the different hospitals have some differences in their responses. What we do here in public health in Clackamas County, again, our infectious disease control and prevention team takes reports of all influenza outbreaks and helps. and prevention team takes reports of all, of all influenza outbreaks and helps to, um, manage and control them and, and mitigate any, um, severe effects. But we also take time, again, it's, it's not something that we're funded to do, but we think it's really important. We take time to, um, host meet and greets with our long-term care facilities, uh, every year in September. So, this year, we had a successful meeting. We present on two different days and invite administrators and nursing supervisors from all the long-term care facilities in Clackamas County. We talk to them about the importance of vaccination. So, this graph down here shows that our skilled nursing facility, uh, staff are not quite meeting our healthy people goals of, uh, vaccination rates. And so there's still a lot that we have to do, because those people being vaccinated is the best way that we can protect the, the vulnerable elderly in their, in their facilities. We talk to them about monitoring and testing and what to do if they have an outbreak, how to control it. We talk to them very specifically about treatment, um, with medications, as well as, uh, preventive treatment when there is an outbreak. Many of the, uh, we, we recommend that all residents of a long-term care facility are put on, um, anti-flu treatment when there is an outbreak in the facility, even to, to prevent illness. And we also talk about, uh, norovirus outbreaks during these meet and greets as well. So, that's what we do locally. So, to wrap up on the flu, things that you could do, wash your hands a lot, limit your contact when you're sick, when you're sick, so stay home when you're sick, cover your cough, um, and get a flu shot. So, I hope that was, that was, uh, interesting to just let you know what we in public health do around this.
What's most valuable to me is that flu season isn't over yet. There's still time to take a shot. It hasn't even really started yet.
So, there's absolutely time to still get your vaccination, um, and there will be more to come.
Okay, I don't know whose light was on first. Ken?
Okay. Briefly, it just, I think this is just important for people to remember historically, because we tend, in today's day and age, to kind of poo-poo the flu a little bit. It's, you know, it's a bad cold. In 1918, 50 million people worldwide died from the flu.
Yeah.
50 million people. That was more people who died in World War I.
Absolutely, thank you.
It is a serious disease, and the things that you're doing are important for people's health. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, you talked about the importance of having flus in our different facilities. And I'm just curious, there's been some press around a death in a correctional facility, and there's an effort at the legislature to require flu shots, um, in correctional facilities. I'm just curious locally here, what do we do, or what are your thoughts about that?
So, Oregon, um, law, uh, does not allow requirement of vaccination for healthcare employees. Um, and part of what, um, hospital systems and healthcare systems do to help protect is to implement restrictions that they are legally able to do, such as if you are an employee in a health system, some health systems, um, choose to, um, make the employees who have not had vaccinations wear a mask during the entire flu system, flu season. I think that having, um, you know, consistency across, across the health systems could be helpful. However, I also really respect each health system making their own decisions about what works for them. Legally, at this point in healthcare, we cannot require it. We can only do everything we can to strongly recommend and encourage it.
So, my question was about, um, people in correctional facilities.
The inmates.
The inmates.
Yeah, make them.
Oh, the inmates, not the staff. Okay.
That's the issue, is that it wasn't, somebody died, they didn't have the option, I believe, to have a flu shot?
They should have had the option.
And if you don't know, that's okay.
No, I think there are a lot of aspects to that around, um, requirements versus encouragement and access. I think that we in public health do our best to ensure that people have access to the flu shot when they want.
So, we do have access, like in our jail here in Clackamas County? People have access, do you know?
Um, I would have to look into that. Um, they, they contract out for their medical services there, and I can check in with them.
That's good. Thank you.
Can I follow up to that?
Sure.
So, do we have any idea what the cost or, or how difficult it even would be to basically offer flu shots to the inmates in the, in our local jail? I mean, it doesn't seem to be a very complicated concept. I mean, you can go to, uh, the drugstore and get a, a free flu shot now, so it's not as if it's-
With insurance.
Well, with insurance.
I don't know.
I don't think you even need insurance if you go to, to Albertson's. But, um, my point is, is it seems like it's something we could do without too much difficulty.
If you would like for me to reach out to our jail and, and talk about that, I'm happy to do that.
So, the next item is about nicotine use on youth. And I got, I'm a little concerned about time.
It's fine.
Uh, so, let's try, we had a big, uh, policy session on this yesterday, or whatever day that was, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So, let's move through this.
So, the, the main thing I wanted to talk about is that on December 18th, the Surgeon General released their advisory on e-cigarette epidemic use among youth. In addition, on November 15th, um, the FDA Commissioner, uh, released a statement on FDA policy changes around youth nicotine use. And we're looking a lot at the, the policy, um, I wanted to bring it up as an emerging health issue that is of concern in the country and in our state, and something that, that guides what we in public health do with our programming. So, um, we don't need to talk in detail about what we're doing. I think you've heard about the TRL in, in our policy sessions very well. But this is just an opportunity to talk a little bit more high level about it. I will just run through the slides, because I am concerned about time as well. The, the main point is that while there has historically been promise for inhalant nicotine devices to be a way of, um, moving adults who are addicted to cigarettes from the combustible tobacco into something that may be safer and hopefully off of a deadly substance, we are seeing a huge rise in electronic nicotine use among youth, and that's concerning. Rather than being an off-ramp for people to get off of cigarettes, we are concerned that it is becoming an on-ramp for youth addiction, where they can then move on to, and we have seen that, the data that shows that youth are moving from electronic cigarettes into combustible tobacco, which we know is, is a deadly substance. They, the Surgeon General is calling for federal, state, local, and non-governmental actions to help curb youth initiation of electronic nicotine inhalant devices. And our tobacco retail licensing policy that we have presented to you and that we're currently working on is one of the best practices and one of the proven ways to help reduce youth initiation of nicotine use. We know that everyone can play an important role in protecting our nation's youth. We've never seen use of any substance by America's youth rise as rapidly as e-cigarette use is rising. And again, here, this, the statement is about the off-ramp, uh, and we don't want it to be an on-ramp. So, with the FDA's, um, statement in November, there may be a lot of changes in the regulations around nicotine happening in the next year or two. Having an effective tobacco retail licensing program will help us ensure that we can educate as well as enforce the changing regulations on our federal level. And I think that's all I need to say about this, if you have any other questions.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, I just wanted to do a piggyback on that. I really appreciated the information that I had since our Tuesday, um, session, and I actually had the wonderful opportunity, OPB was doing it, or maybe it was NPR, now I can't.
I think it was Think Out Loud on OPB.
Yeah, Think Out Loud, that's it. I had the wonderful opportunity of hearing most of that segment on my way home, right after our policy session. So, what I was really compelled about is the evidence that shows the actual harm of the chemicals that are in e-cigarettes. And that's a public relations campaign and effort that I'm hoping gets out there, because people really believe that, oh, you're not putting smoke into your lungs, and so it's not, it's not harmful. And those actual chemicals that go into people's lungs actually cause lung disease. So, that's important to, to highlight. Thank you for all of your support in educating me on those issues. And a special thank you to Kathleen Rastetter, and also to Stephen Madcor, who's given me everything. Once you say, you know, hey, I don't know about this, we have a whole community saying, we will get you what you need. So, thank you.
Hey, thanks. And we are going to actually ask if anyone from the public would like to comment on this. All right, seeing none, um, the Board of Health will now, uh, adjourn, and we will reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners with County Administrator Updates.
So, I will suspend my normal, um, good news reports for you for today and, and share that with you next week. I do have an obligation, though, to share with you the contract matters that, um, County Administration took action on while you were during, uh, in recess during the holidays. And I have just six of them. One involving Health Housing and Human Services. This was approval of a sub-recipient grant agreement with, uh, the Father's Heart Street Ministry for, uh, Warming Center Services. And then another, um, contract, uh, with H3S involving approval of a sub-recipient grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for Shelter from Domestic Violence. And a third, um, agreement with Health Housing and Human Services involving the approval of a, an amendment number two to an agency service agreement with the Inn for Case Management and Staffing Services. For Business and Community Services via the Procurement Office, there is approval of a Contract Amendment Number One with Cersei Dynex for Integrated Library System Project, uh, Support and Maintenance. And then, uh, Human Resources through the Procurement Office, uh, involving the approval of a Personal Professional Services Contract between the Department of Human Resources and Sedgwick Claims Management Services to provide liability adjusting and claims administration services. And then finally, with the, the Finance Department, approval of contracts with Linguava Interpreters Incorporated for On-Call Interpreter Services for Clackamas County Departments.
Thank you.
Good job. Almost as good as what Mary does when she reads the consent agenda.
Commissioner Fisher, you're up on Commissioner Communications.
Okay, well, I know we're running out of time, but I did want to let everyone know that it is now January. The strangulation bill that we advocated for during the special session, last session, went into effect. And Clackamas County is doing some public awareness about that. We did a Facebook Live event this morning, wanting to make people know that that strangulation, the crime of strangulation, has changed from misdemeanor to felony. And that's been an important effort that a lot of folks have been involved in for a long time, and so just want to make sure everybody knows.
That's it?
Yep, just for today.
All right, Ken.
Okay, I'll, I'll be as brief as I can. Obviously enjoyed Christmas and New Year's break, uh, with family and friends. I'm sure everybody else did too. Attended Senator Merkley's Town Hall, where, uh, he always meets with the elected officials prior to the general public meeting. So, we were able to iterate to him our concern about funding for 205, uh, continued support for the cross-laminated timber industry and initiative here in Clackamas County, and also, uh, even discussed a little bit about the courthouse. As you probably are aware, uh, we've been doing county administrator interviews and processing since Sunday, when we came back to work. That's the first time I've ever had to go back to work on a Sunday, but that was just fine. We've also attended the Legislative Dinner with our 21-member, uh, Clackamas County Legislative, uh, contingent, uh, both a dinner that we hosted and also at the Clackamas County Business Alliance Legislative Summit, where, again, we're iterating to them our concerns about 205, the courthouse, the sunrise corridor, et cetera. And finally, Commissioner Bernard and I went to a meeting in, um, Oak Grove Jennings Lodge area, uh, last night, where we had the opportunity to share with them our experiences and the, the agreements that were, uh, established in China during our 18 days there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have the dog?
I do. Thank you. This is Hunter, and he is looking for his forever home. He's an energetic, strong fellow who needs his forever person to be as strong as well so we can go for walks together, because he sometimes forgets how strong he is. He is a four-year-old neutered pit bull terrier. He would do best in a home that has children over 13 years of age, no cats, and no small dogs. For more information about Hunter or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm also going to be short. I want to thank staff for the Legislative Dinner. I thought it was well done. It was fun. And, uh, we have some great, uh, legislators down in Salem this year, and we are working very closely with our lobbying staff and with them to make sure that Clackamas County's issues are addressed. And then last night, uh, CCBA, Clackamas County Business Alliance, also hosted, uh, some of those legislators, some new faces, because it was a little different area. And, uh, so, uh, we're working hard to make sure that Clackamas County's issues are addressed. And with that, Happy New Year, and thank you. We adjourn the meeting.